Is that Casey there?
Yeah.
Yep.
It looks like a really nice background.
I think that's his house, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
It must be one of the neighbors.
I was gonna say, is he, is he outside? Do you see?
Yeah.
I think you get so many leaves on your tree in the early.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I can if you don't mind. We have our two elects and the city attorneys there. Yep. Okay, so just a quick announcement for those of you who are remote. Everyone is muted now. You have the control to unmute yourself if you wish. So just be cognizant of that. If you want to mute yourself and you wish to not have everyone hear what's going on in your place, then you'll, you should mute yourself again. We can mute you here and will if we need to, but for those people who are going to be active participants, you will have to make sure that you are unmuted so that you can speak.
And with that, let's call up the order. The regular common council meeting, November sixteenth, seven P. M. Rule call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is pledge of allegiance. And for those of you at home, you can just follow along. We'll do it here so we don't have, um, the ankle.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Council made some appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, November thirteenth. Agendas were posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Thank you. Council acceptance of agenda. Motion to accept the November sixteen, twenty twenty regular common council meeting agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, rule call.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the public hearing to hear comments regarding the twenty twenty one proposed budget document. I will officially open up the public hearing and anyone that was wanted to was able to send in email comments. None were received. And I don't see anyone in the audience here to speak on the budget. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on? So we can officially close the public hearing. What do you want the public hearing? And we will move on to consider the national city legislature resolution twenty twenty about the twenty twenty one annual budget and the state of the twenty twenty property tax levy for the city of Atlanta.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? I would like to thank again everybody that is involved in this process. Actually went fairly good this year, which is kind of surprising. No further discussion. Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes. Personal appearances. Anyone else that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? And since there's no one in the audience, I don't believe we're going to need to do that. Next item is minutes. Consider approval of the minutes from November second.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from November second, twenty twenty council meeting?
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, rule call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee report, final.
Yes, final announcement. Met this evening at six forty-five. Make a motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and one cent.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve new class A beer and class A cider only license for court trip anchor. DVA Step and Go number fifteen hundred at one South Main Street. Agent Alicia Impah.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, for the next item, the public event packet for Home for the Holidays Parade. That was, the motion was made to move it right on to council for further discussion. And the reason why I wanted to do that was because of what we have in front of us with the Rock County reopening faith or returning to phase one. I don't know, Ramona, you want to give a little background on this information?
Well, these are the county guidelines. We have reverted back to phase one, meaning the, um, what is changing is listed in the column. The paper's in front of you. Um, what is mostly relevant for this evening's conversation is parades are in the second item there on the left-hand column of the type of use. And it is now avoid these gatherings of any size of individuals who are not members of the same living unit or households, what the county's recommendation is at a phase one.
Okay, so we can, um, have further discussion on this if we'd like. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny the public event packet for Home for Holidays Parade. Um, waiving the fees based on Rock County's moving to, back to phase one, uh, plan.
I would second.
Okay, discussion. I want to speak up right away here. Um, back when, eight months or so ago, these issues started with the, um, different phases. I stated all along that I would like to see the city follow the county, county guidelines because they do have the health department down there. So I am in favor of not having the parade myself this year. I know there'll be a lot of people disappointed, but, um, they could be a lot more disappointed if something were to happen that you didn't foresee. Or watching the parade or getting together and assembling your flow.
I might, um, add that we did, we, meaning the Home for the Holidays meet, uh, committee, did meet a week ago and discussed this. And as of last week, there was even some discussion, should we, should we not hold it? And then we thought, well, let's hold the parade. We, um, took it down a lot than what we've had in the previous years. We were not going to be offering any activities for cocoa, hot cocoa, and popcorn at the depot. No big tree lighting ceremony. So we even skinny that production down quite a bit. But now based on this phase one, me or I agree with you, we're just not comfortable.
It's disappointing, but it's been a pretty disappointing year. Robert?
Question. Um, was there a charity or somebody that was going to benefit from this? Or what's the, is this just a Christmas Eve parade?
Yeah, the activity, yeah.
Yeah, there's no beneficiary. It's all done by volunteers.
The council is for the community to have a parade and, um, like, um, play the, play the tree.
Will, will we still light the tree? I mean, without any fanfare or anything like that?
They put the lights on today.
Yeah, I saw that. They're, they're lit. I don't know if you intend them to be lit.
Were they gonna stay?
They're on right, they're on now?
They were, I came down here.
Oh.
Yeah, I suppose.
Right, take care of that.
I was gonna ask if that was, yeah, we're gonna.
Yeah.
So. We'll wait for that evening.
And again, just speaking from the committee perspective, the, um, lights at Central Park will continue. Those will be, we're gonna start working on those tomorrow. While some work was done today. And, um, I believe those displays, as well as the tree every night, will automatically go on at six o'clock P. M. Um, yes.
Yeah, earlier.
Okay, so all of that, the lights will, they'll all be there, but no major production.
Attorney Morgan, I would like to make an interrupted motion. You may have to help me here. Are you there?
I am sorry, I had to unmute.
Okay.
Good. What, what was that, Alder Reynolds?
Uh, I would like to make an interrupted motion, but you may need to help me, my, my rabbi, Tru, or whatever.
Certainly.
I object to the item being discussed on First Amendment freedom of religion grounds. Um, and move to void the motion, which I think is a two-thirds vote.
Um, I, I have not heard that a item on agenda is, is volitive of First Amendment. I, I, and, and what I think you're suggesting is that, um, well, any avoid item for proper notice, perhaps, uh, could be stricken. But I don't know for what other reason you could strike it for the reasons you've stated. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't help you there. But why don't we see if there's a second to it and we can at least proceed for discussion purposes?
This was on the league training seminar and all the person making the, and interrupted objection, there is no second. It's an immediate two-thirds vote. This is from what I remember. This is what I wanted your help with.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, you, you've taken me into waters that I'm not familiar with. Uh.
Well, according to information, though, you're, you're correct on yours, I believe. However, you accepted the agenda in number four. That would have been the point apart where you would make your objection discussing any of that.
I'm objecting to the denial. There was no denial.
You said you were objecting to the discussion of this.
Of the item, which is a denial motion.
Well, I thought you were objecting to the item itself. I misunderstood.
I'm objecting to the denial on First Amendment freedom of religion grounds.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't want to argue the point with you, um, Alder Reynolds, but I don't know on what basis you would have to, um, uh, strike the motion. I, I think Alder Burdick is, is correct. There could be an issue with a topic or an item on an agenda. But the motion is to deal with an item on the agenda, and I think the motion is proper. So I don't know that you can supersede it. You can argue against it. You can vote against it. But I, I don't know that a motion to deny a request is improper in this particular instance.
I also, if you could clarify a little bit, I have a question. We said based on freedom of religion. I guess I don't understand what that has to do with the Home for the Holidays Parade.
It's a Christmas celebration.
It's a holiday celebration.
It's a holiday. We purposely do not have anything related to religion with this. Nothing. We don't even have, we have nothing to do with
There's no religious stars.
Right.
That's why it's called Home for the Holidays.
No, not holidays, which are, are Hanukkah, maybe Christmas. They're, they're all religious holidays. Thanksgiving is a holiday. Um, there's, there's, this, this is very non-religious of nature. If you look at the, even the lights that we have at Central Park, it's about golfing. It's about throwing snowballs. It's about a whole bunch of things. We purposely stay away from anything religious related. Like, you'll see a Christmas tree, but yeah, no Star of David, no.
You can either get your own holiday tree if you want it. I mean,
Yeah.
It's your choice and term out.
So I was just curious when you said freedom of religion, because we worked very hard on this committee to have nothing to do with religious, religion.
So how, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, they're all holidays?
Yep.
A holiday, not a holiday. We're saying holiday.
Celebrate it as a religious holiday.
Well, that's how they celebrate.
Not, not everyone, though.
Well, you don't. No, not everyone. There are, there are a sizable number of people that celebrate this as a religious holiday. Even if the committee tries to separate itself from the religious, uh, and I'm taking it, then there are still people that celebrate it as a religious holiday.
You could probably make that argument if we were talking about the exact date of Christmas Day or perhaps days in Hanukkah when it's.
The winter time holidays don't have a specific day, like Hanukkah.
Yes, they do. They have very specific dates that last eight days throughout the year, every year. They just vary on the calendar.
No, there's like a, a day range where people celebrate assorted holidays.
So there, I guess I'll go back then too with the, um, you're wanting a denial for the motion based on religion.
I was gonna make, it's an objection, not a denial.
I'm sorry, an objection because you're saying the real, a religious holiday should be hell or religious event should be hell? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think we have the right to shut down this type of events.
I wasn't following. Now I understand.
Um, I, I do want to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, Alder Reynolds is correct. This, an objection is an incidental motion. It is not, uh, debatable. So therefore I think that, uh, mayor, it's needs to be put to the vote, uh, at this point. And it, it's really a, a question of procedure. I, I don't know that it's appropriate, but it's been made and I think it needs to be dealt with, but it is not, uh, subject to debate. So.
I apologize. I just wanted to better.
No, no, I, I, no reason to apologize. It's, it was news to me as well, and thankfully I'm in front of a computer.
The procedural concerns are constitutional rights, but.
So you're saying we need to vote on this?
Yes, on the, it is a, uh, a motion to suppress business, uh, uh, that, uh, might prove damaging to an organization. I think that, I understand Alder Reynolds', uh, uh, position. I, 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 at least I think I do, um, that to not hold it is suppressing religious, uh, freedom of expression. Um, and I, I think he's entitled to a vote on his request to deny the, uh, to take up the motion to deny the request. I, I'm not quite sure what the remedy is, but I think the motion itself is probab- probably appropriate.
So if the Home for the Holidays wanted to put on a parade that we have nothing, the city has nothing to do with, they still could.
What, what I'm saying is that if the council were to determine that they're going to override the objection and does so with a, uh, majority vote, I don't know that a super majority. But if Alder Burdick tells me that he believes that's correct, I, I will believe that he is correct and, and, and that Alder Reynolds is correct. But a, a super majority vote to override the objection and then continue with the motion is one possible course of action. Uh, as I say, if the objection is sustained, um, then I think we're left with the, uh, item on the agenda. If a, a motion is brought to, um, have the, uh, to approve the, uh, parade packet and that's seconded, that could be voted on. If nothing is, uh, happens, then it's going to fail for want of action.
So we need to take the vote on?
The objection to consideration of the motion to deny.
Are you, are you ready with that, Sandy?
So we just take a vote on that? There's no second?
That, that does not appear to require one, no.
Okay.
Reynolds?
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Of course.
So if we vote no, then we go back to the original?
That would be correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Bernie Johnson, please.
Yes. Reynolds?
Yes.
Bronn?
No.
Langen?
No.
Davis?
No.
Radke?
No.
Burdick?
No.
Motion fails. Back to the original motion to deny the approval of the packet.
I don't think we have any right doing this. People have constitutional rights, even under coronavirus. They can celebrate, they can have parades.
They can, but we, uh, we won't be furnishing the, no parking signs and, uh, limiting parking and.
Safety, all of those things?
The barricades, the police escort, all that. We won't, we won't be doing that. They can, they can do it. Someone's on the committee.
That's the better their, their ability to exercise their rights to ensure police protection.
There will be police protection. There won't be an escort. There won't be all the no parking. There won't be all the services the city provides to these events and to this event.
I'm sorry, uh, us offering a police escort would better assist their ability to exercise their First Amendment rights.
That is the whole point of an event packet when they present it to the city, is we either approve it or we deny it based on what the event is going, what event is going to be taking place and what resources that they require from the city. We have that authority to approve it or deny it. In the interest right now, based on where we're at with the phases in the coronavirus pandemic, it would probably be not a very intelligent decision to encourage gathering.
They have a right to do this gathering.
They, no one is saying they do not have a right to.
Yes, but if they're going to have this gathering, let's give them the police es- let's, let's better their ability to exercise their rights.
You're gonna have a police escort for what? Nothing. You can have a police drive-through town. There's not gonna be a parade if they, you know?
But there is a parade. They're asking for it right here. I don't understand what.
And we're saying no arguments. We're, we're not gonna provide anything. And the police escort, it, it's just like any other packet that we would provide. It's in time. They're taking them away from something else that we might have to do to assist in an event. And so from a, as Sarah, as Alder Person Bronn indicated, the city has a right to, these come before us and we have a right to approve or deny. It does not mean that nothing can, no parade can happen. If an individual wants to have a parade down the street, I guess they can do that. But we are not going to provide city services for it. If the motion passes, thank you.
Well, why shouldn't we offer city services then?
Because we.
That's your choice. Everybody gets a vote on it.
Everybody has a choice.
That's, that's the whole point of taking a vote on these kinds of things.
Well, yes, I'm, I just want, we're taking a vote on whether or not we should offer city services. Well, why, why shouldn't we offer city services?
Because of this piece of information that is in front of us that says Rock County is returning to phase one. It's a safety precaution.
Just what you made some argument is that they can do the parade. We're only voting to offer city services or not?
We're promoting gatherings that are not recommended right now if we, if we assist with this, in my opinion.
If all we're doing is having a police escort follow them around, are, are police in danger inside their car from catching COVID?
Why don't we, um, we can have the, um, people that want to have, that might want to be in a parade, we can always ask for a escort if there's people that want to. And not only are we gonna have now, we didn't, there wasn't that many to begin with this year.
I feel very uncomfortable even asking the police department. That would, they would have to do it all on their own. I am very uncomfortable with this. And believe me, I've been on this committee since the beginning. I solely, a hundred percent, and then some, support this. This saddens me that we can't have this.
We can have it.
We put a lot of sweat, tears, and money into this.
You know, if, I'm speaking on a personal level as a business owner, that would greatly benefit from traffic from an event like this. It would be extremely irresponsible for us to encourage that kind of gathering. Like, I, I am making this decision based on what Rock County has suggested, which is what we have done from the very beginning of this pandemic. So I, 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 I don't really understand what your huge objection is when we're looking out for the best interests of the citizens that live in this community.
Because the right to have a parade.
You know what I'm saying? They don't have a right? You know what I'm saying? They don't have a right. It would be irresponsible for us to help make an event like this happen when the county, the county, the public health officials at the county level have suggested that we do not have these kinds of gatherings.
If I remember at the beginning of, in spring, early, early summer, when Rock County went to a phase, went through the phases into Phase One, did we as a council motion to, I'm trying to remember, to accept Rock County guidelines? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that.
I was just for the pool, if I remember.
No, 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 no.
I was for, it was for all events.
It was for all events.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I.
Mayor's recommendation, we all accepted it as a council.
Correct.
Well, Robert, I know you, I know what you're getting tied into, and I, I totally agree. They have the right to do it. If you're looking at what we're doing, all we're doing is not approving the packet, as they said. They can get up there, they can have them, they can do it. And I know two guys said they were. Well, one of them was us. But I do know that they're, but we're just gonna drive through. You know, you can't stop. But you, we're not gonna have the streets blacked off. We're not gonna condone because of the county recommendation. That's all. The city isn't, as all, or five of us, six, maybe, or whatever votes, are just not gonna condone the gathering that goes against the CDC or the health recommendations of the county. That's all. We're not saying don't have it. We're just saying, we're not gonna condone it. It's the same, you know, just, it, it says don't, so we, we don't condone it. That's all. As a city, we're not gonna be responsible for people gathering and doing this. We tried to have the committee. As a, as a committee, we set it up, we're not gonna have a tree lighting. We weren't gonna have a big group dinner and like hand out popcorn and chocolate. We didn't want any gatherings at all. We're just gonna make a simple parade. Old people stood out there. Now they've actually come up and said, no parade, or should avoid the parade. That's the recommendation. Before that, we were gonna try and get something for the safe, for the kids, for everyone. Positive. Trust me, my grandkids are gonna be upset because they're in it. So.
If, if all we're doing is saying whether or not we should have barricades, if, if the, if whether or not the parade happens is up to the, the participants themselves, why wouldn't we want to make this as safe as possible with the barricades? If that's the only decision we're making, why are we, why are we making this less safe if it's gonna happen either way? Let's put up police barricades. Let's get a police escort. The, I don't think individual officers.
But then we're going against Rock County's recommendation.
By approving and you're condoning.
That's just, yeah.
Because if we're looking at Rock County. American heritage and Rock County guidelines, we can.
Okay.
Okay, we call for a question? Seems like the.
I'll start.
Motion second to call a question. Rule call on that motion.
Burdick?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Point your information. I'm not familiar with this motion.
Do they ask, really, once a rule call starts, you're supposed to continue? This means there's no more discussion after this mo, if this motion passes on the motion that's on the floor. We can correct the rule call, right?
No.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes, five go on. Now back to the original motion to deny the event packet. Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Motion passes, five go on.
Okay, um, motion to approve addendum to Cedar Court contract to include the designing construction of the water system booster station on the southwest side of the city.
Any discussion? Now rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion to approve intent to award Sherbrite Taxi Contract to Brown Cab for the period January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? Here now, rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Motion passes.
That's it for finance.
Thank you. For personnel.
Okay, personnel, make a motion to approve the second reading and, and adoption of City of Edgerton Ordinance twenty dash ten, amend chapter two, general government, sections two point one oh, director of public works, and section two point one six, utility director, to also be referred to as municipal services director in the code of general ordinances.
Any discussion? Here now, rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
And that's it for personnel.
Okay, Mayor, all the person that's staff reports.
Utility.
Oh, I skipped that one.
Where did I put it wrong? It wasn't down there.
And I'm sorry. I know they're rewarding, yes.
My utilities.
I am sorry. I know you do. Get me out of here. Okay, utilities met last Monday, November ninth, and, um, really nothing major to report, other than I do want to note that it was Randy Orin's last utility meeting that he was heading up. And of course, we all wish him well. And Howard will be taking Randy's place at those meetings going forward. So that's it for utilities.
All right, thank you. Mayor, all the person that's staff reports. Got a couple things. This is our tenth anniversary in this building.
Wow.
Some of us that have been here.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. Wow.
Ten years. Doesn't seem that long ago. Um, speaking of that, it was a busy pe, busy place here on November third, like the, thanks Cindy and Wendy and all the election workers that put in a long day, a couple of you, Lisa, who was here late. It went, from what I saw, very well. Hopefully the absentee ballots made it a little easier for the people that did come in line here and spend, spend some time here. It looked like it went, went pretty good, and the staff, election crew did a hell of a job. And, and speaking of that, the veterans had their veterans memorial service down there on Veterans Day. It's really taken shape, and a nice crowd for that. And we have Thanksgiving coming up, and reasons to get together, but try and stay safe. And I'd like to thank Robert for the time he did spend here in the council, and good luck out in the town, Albi.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I think that's all I have. And this, any other?
I'm gonna do a quick piggyback on the election. For people I talked to that liked to come in and vote that day, you did a heck of a job. They, they were standing outside. It was a nice day. They liked it. And people talked, and every one of them that I talked to, so it was great coming in and voting personally. Very easy. And for you and your staff.
I would agree, and I've worked the polls, and I only say that to give you a firsthand observation and knowledge. The city staff here, they were impeccable with how they ran things. It, it, they did an excellent job, so, thank you.
Oh, and thanks for, to piggyback on that, too. Thanks for.
You might say it's gonna be boring. See, that's gonna swear on Rock County guidelines.
Well, you're on Bigelow. The roof tighter right there.
Yeah.
Actually, I.
Can tell you're not a bear.
Did have something. So I announced that this is going to be my last month here. Uh, but this meeting was my last obligation as Alder Person. Uh, there's no free board happening later. Library's already done. Unless Ramona wants to get a, the ball, we won't pack it. I don't think that anything else is going to come up. So it's been great working with all of you. It's been the last. I think everybody should run for office. I know that after I move in, I've been considering running for either Albi and Town Supervisor or Dane County Supervisor. And after talking to some of my, uh, some of the constituents in that area, I think I'm gonna run for Dane County Supervisor. The, the districting lines will be redrawn by then, so I don't know who I'll be up against, but best of luck to them. I'm trying to make the Dane County meetings as exciting as the, uh, Edgerton meetings.
Good luck.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Rule call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
No.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes, five go on. We're turned, I don't have to turn this stuff off, so.
I get it.